Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the Monday, February 10th public hearing for the charter review and also to the select board meeting, which will start immediately after the charter review public hearing. We have -- my name is Jeanne Jenkins and I have the pleasure of chairing this board, and I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nancy White.
Hi, good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Good evening, Tom Haley.
Yes, good day, Clark Adams.
Hi, Jean Connor.
Well, thank you all. And also with us tonight, we have Shannon Barsadi, who is our Community Development Director, and she is sitting in for Town Managers to Hurt. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes every meeting. And we have Josh Boucher from CAT TV, who we thank very much for filming this live and being here on such a regular basis. What we will do tonight is start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Clark, if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Clark. Tom, would you read us the vision statement that guides our work?
I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We will turn first to the warned public hearing on the Town of Bennington Charter changes that will be on the March 4th ballot. This is the second hearing and is for the purpose of providing the public with an opportunity to ask questions and share thoughts that will benefit us all in making decisions on the six ballot amendments. I'd like to ask Tom Haley to read through those six amendments at this time.
All right. The residents of the Town of Bennington qualified by law to vote are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street, Lincoln Street entrance, in said town on Monday, January 27, 2025, and Monday, February 10, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. to hear and discuss proposed amendments to the Town of Bennington Charter. Article 1, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section 103-807 to subchapter 8 as follows. Requirements for legal resident voters who are not citizens. A, notwithstanding provisions of 17 VSA Chapter 43, a legal resident who is not a citizen of the United States shall be a legal voter at a local Town of Bennington election if the individual meets the following qualifications. Is a legal resident of the United States, is not less than 18 years of age, has taken the voter's oath, resides in the Town of Bennington as residency is defined in 17 VSA 2122, and is registered to vote with the Board -- and is registered to vote with the Board of Registration of Voters no later than the deadline established by Vermont law for that election or meeting. B, for purposes of this section, a legal resident of the United States means any non-citizen who resides in the United States on a permanent or indefinite basis in compliance with federal immigration laws. C, this section does not change a non-citizen's ability to vote in any state or federal election. D, a legal resident voter who is not a citizen may cast a ballot only for local officers and local public questions specific to the Town of Bennington. Article 2, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section 103-808 to subchapter 8 as follows. 103-808 Youth Voters. Not with -- A, notwithstanding the provisions of 17 VSA Chapter 43, youth voters shall be legal voters in the Town of Bennington elections. B, for the purposes of this section, youth voter means a person who is 16 to 18 years of age and is otherwise qualified to vote in town elections pursuant to 17 VSA Chapter 43, Subchapter 1, and under the provisions of this charter. C, this section does not change a youth voter's ability to vote in any state or federal election. D, a youth voter may cast a ballot only for local officers and local public questions specific to the Town of Bennington. Article 3, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section 103-809 to Subchapter 8 as follows. The filing of a notice of lien resulting from a judgment by a court of competent jurisdiction for fines in an enforcement proceeding under the Town of Bennington's Land Use and Development Regulations, Property Maintenance Ordinance, or Housing, Building, and Life Safety Ordinance shall have priority in law over any other lien having priority in time. Such underlying enforcement lien shall remain valid and subsisting lien upon such real property until such fines are fully paid or otherwise discharged, but not longer than eight years from the date of such judgment, unless it shall have been renewed pursuant to Vermont law. Article 4, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to change the language of section 103-511A to add the following subsection 5 thereto. A 1% tax on non-owner occupied short-term rentals. Article 5, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to change the language of section 103-406A to Subchapter 4 as follows. A, unless expressly modified by contract, on 90 days written notice from the Select Board, the Town Manager may be removed without cause by a majority of the Select Board at a meeting called for the purpose of voting on removal. During the 90-day period, the Town Manager may be suspended with pay. Article 6, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section 103-3039 to Subchapter 3 as follows. 9, delegate the responsibility to review video footage, transcripts, and other materials following an investigation of a complaint against the Police Department to the existing Community Police Adviser -- Policing Advisory Review Board or to another board established by the Select Board to replace the Community Policing Advisory Review Board. That was a lot.
Thank you very much for doing that. I know. But you have a good reading voice. All right. So, reminder on the rules for commenting. This is -- we're only talking about the charter amendments now. Please keep your comments or questions to three minutes, and Jeanne has a handy-dandy 30-second card to remind you when you're getting close. When you finish your question or comment, please sit down. You have a table and a chair today, so you're welcome to use that, or you can go to the podium. Please be civil and no personal attacks. And if you have a question, we will try to answer it, and everyone gets to speak once before anyone gets to speak a second time. All right. Anyone with a question or a comment on any of the charter amendments that are going to be on the ballot? Yes, please. Please state your name and town that you live in.
Michael Moscato. I live in Bennington, Vermont. I wanted to address the specifically two charter amendments. The legal age of voting for the town and the resident voting in the charter. There's been a lot of discussion. I may be new, relatively new to this area, but I'm not new to politics and I'm not new to people. There's some things that have been discussed by people running, hoping to seek positions before me, that I wanted to just provide some clarity one last time as a former member of the Charter Review Committee. So I want to start with the process. Once again, there was issues that were brought to the Select Board by members of this community. Those issues were brought to the Select Board. The Select Board then passed on those issues to seven people who were selected as part of the Charter Review Committee. They were -- those people were interviewed. We all come from diverse backgrounds, personally, professionally, and politically. It has been a great honor, as a resident of Bennington, to share the diligent effort of the Charter Review Committee, and we did some outstanding work, as you can look at the detailed reporting provided for the last several months since we turned in the report in December. Specifically with those two issues that I mentioned previously, I want to make clear that regardless of what you've heard, we are not debating whether these people that we're talking about as non-citizens, they are legal residents of this country. They are legal residents of Bennington, Vermont. We're not debating that. The U.S. law, the U.S. Constitution, has already established that they are just as legal of a resident of Bennington as you or I. And I want to make that clear specifically. When we talk about the legal resident situation, what we are asking when it comes to the vote, what we're talking about with 16- and 17-year-old youth voters being included as voters in this town, the process for our committee was that you, as voters in the Town of Bennington, should have the privilege to decide whether or not you want to include them or not. Fear tactics by those who wish to seek positions on this board. Misinformation is just not something that I want to be part of anybody's decision, regardless of how you want to vote. If you don't want to vote for 16- and 17-year-olds, make it on an informed decision. If you don't want to vote non-citizen, legal residence in, it's your privilege to make that selection, one way or the other. But I want you to be clear that they are legal residents. And then when we talk about the age, we stand in a very historic town. 200 years ago, 15-year-olds could serve in the military. If it wasn't for 15-year-olds, we might not be here. 17-year-olds can currently serve in the U.S. military. There's a lot of things that are outside of generalizations. There are 16-year-olds and 17-year-olds who work hard to provide for their families. When you hear rhetoric that is exclusive, it goes against the town's vision statement. One of the things I'm most proud of about being a member of Bennington is the vision statement of being inclusive, being welcoming. The leaders that we have sit before us as the new election comes forward, I hope that the Town of Bennington, in their choices, whether it's regarding the charter, that you listen to the words around the charter, around the policies that are going to sit before us, so that you understand that the people leading this town and the decisions that we make regarding this charter should be based off of the correct information and the hard work of the people that sit before you here on the Select Board, the Charter Review Committee, which was made up of members of the community that are just like you yourselves, and make those decisions based off of the correct information and the fact that they are legal residents of Bennington, legal residents of the United States of America, and that in regards to the youth vote, it is your choice. But not all 16- and 17-year-olds are non-working, they're paying into the tax system, they are of benefit, and the youth is the future of our country. I understand that change is a difficult word. I understand that there are potential different ideas. More ideas, welcoming people, looking after your neighbor, equality, inclusiveness, that's not a liberal policy. That is an American policy. Our ability to talk about different ideas and discuss this in an organized fashion is what differentiates us from most all countries in the world, and it's something that I'm very proud of, the system that we have here in the town. I thank everybody for allowing the seven of us to take part in that process, and I just ask that the people of this town, as you consider what's going to be on your ballot, whether it's people or the policies in this charter review, that you really take your time to understand that these decisions do not need to be made out of fear, they do not need to be made out of the fact that people may think differently than you. It's not too long ago, as I've said before, that women were not allowed to vote, that Black people were not considered equal. Change is good. Change and diversity is a strength of our country, it's a strength of this town, and I hope that everybody considers that in their decisions on March 4th. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's up next? We could have a short hearing. Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Yes, Kelly. Come on up.
Kelly Carroll, resident of Bennington. And I'm going to piggyback on what Mr. Moscato said. Take time to understand what's on the ballot. I'm a Bennington resident, and for the last two and a half years, I have been the Chair of the Community Policing Advisory Review Board, CPARB. This is my personal opinion. Article 6 asks about delegating the responsibility to review video footage, transcripts, and other materials following an investigation of a complaint against the Police Department to the existing Community Policing Advisory Review Board or to, quote, "another board established by the Select Board to replace the Community Policing Advisory Review Board." I will vote no on Article 6. CPARB just updated their resolution to embody the philosophy of community policing, and after reading the Charter Review Report that I encourage everyone to take the time to understand, that last sentence does not appear to support or encourage community policing, so I cannot support it. The Charter Review Report, which recommends a charter amendment to equip a citizen review board with the, quote, "power" to conduct reviews of allegations of officer misconduct as recommended by the Safety and Equity Task Force. Some of their recommendations, you, the Select Board, chose to enact, and others you didn't, for multiple reasons. And for one reason or another, they didn't get everything on that list. Instead, what they got was CPARB, and after the investigation is complete, Advisory and Review Board that supports community policing and collaborates with the Police Department. CPARB was on the last Select Board agenda, and a couple of people said they didn't want the police at any of CPARB's meetings or listening sessions. Some feel very strongly that anything less than complete oversight is unacceptable. I do not believe that the majority of Bennington residents feel this way, but I believe this sentence, when combined with the Charter Review Report, sends the wrong message to law enforcement, the wrong message for public safety, and possibly increases our taxes without voter or town approval. Article 6 just doesn't give CPARB the ability to review body camera footage and other documents, which is something that CPARB had wanted all along, but with current state regulations and Dillon's Law, which I'll let the Select Board explain, we weren't allowed to do that. But Article 6 opens the door to replace CPARB with a very costly oversight board, and all it takes to dismantle and replace CPARB is four members of the Select Board, not a charter change. The last statement in Article 6 is the first step in opening the door to additional expenses Bennington taxpayers can't afford. Things like hiring lawyers, investigators, and administrative staff, all without voter or town approval before spending those funds, all for the power in the name of oversight. Vermont's a small state. Police oversight for the Vermont State Police is done at the state level, and so should local police department oversight. Vermont has the State Police Advisory Commission, SPAC, and the Vermont Criminal Justice Council, which reviews misconduct and other serious police department complaints across the state. The state has the funding, the expertise, and the support to do it correctly, legally and equitably. Bennington needs to collaborate with our police department, not work against them in an adversarial fashion. We have five open positions in the Bennington Police Department. A couple of years ago, Burlington implemented a police oversight commission that the Burlington taxpayers pay for. Burlington is already down about 20 officers. Their Chief of Police and their two lieutenants have resigned. They're expecting several other officers to leave after their current leadership leaves. I think we need to send the message that Bennington supports our police department. When I read the Charter Review Report and then I read that last sentence in Article 6, I think voting yes on Article 6 sends the wrong message. So again, learn from Burlington. Vote on March 4th. I will be voting no on Articles 1, 2, 4, and 6, and not out of fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. We can address Dillon's Law. Should we do that? So, when CPARB was -- so the Community Policing Advisory Board -- Review Board was established three years ago, we actually gave that board the power that is in Article 6. And what we learned from our attorney was that we did not have the authority to do so because of something called Dillon's Law, which is D-I-L-L-O-N-S, apostrophe S. Unlike many states, the communities in Vermont do not have the authority to make up their own rules. All authority comes from the legislature unless it is included in our charter. So what we were told was that in order to give CPARB the -- one of the major reasons that it was put in effect could not be done until -- unless it was included in the charter and in the charter amendments, voted on, voted positively on by the residents, voters of Bennington, and then was approved by the legislature and by the governor, but that we did not have that authority. On the advice of our attorney, we were told that we should include the line that says that either the Community Policing Advisory Review Board or another board established by the Select Board to replace it should be included, not because anyone wanted anything other than a review board. I think this board has been extremely clear about that, as have the last -- as has the last board. But that if CPARB -- if CPARB went away, then that in order to not have the requirement that the Select Board, again, be that review board, there has to be a review board. Right now, it's the Select Board. So we're trying to give that authority to the CPARB, which is where it originally -- where we had originally planned to put it. So, in order for it not to revert to the Select Board, we were advised by our attorney to put in a phrase that says, "the CPARB or whatever the replacement board is." It's not with any plan to have a replacement board. It is that in case CPARB dissolves for some reason. So, that's all I wanted to say to that. I don't know if anyone else
I do.
has anything to say. Okay, go ahead.
When we received the Charter Review Committee's final report, and they came before us, I made it clear I had some concerns about this very item, but I wasn't allowed to ask them the questions. You said something to the effect that this wasn't the time. Now, I'm sure the committee would have answered my questions.
Nancy, we had two -- Nancy, I'm going to stop you, because if you recall, when we looked at -- when we voted, when we had as an agenda item the charter review amendments, there was a 6A and a 6B. There was the original, and we had discussion. Now, whether you missed your opportunity to talk about it.
Jeanne, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
All of the information they provided and reasons why they felt that was important, I had questions on a couple of specific things. I wasn't allowed to ask the questions that night. I'm sure they would have answered my questions.
Are you finished?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, they were here. That was the time for the board to be able to ask them questions about everything they'd written. There were a couple of things I had a real concern about, and I couldn't even ask at the meeting.
So Nancy, you -- anything that's on topic, you are allowed to ask. This specific thing, this specific 6A and B, we actually had a full discussion about, and we voted. And we voted to take 6B, which is the language that is in here, over the language that was 6A, because 6A was not the intent of this board. So I'm asking, is there anything you'd like to ask?
No, I'm talking about the details. When the Charter Committee made a recommendation about the cost, who would fund it, well, possibly take the money from the Police Department budget, and there was a section where they talked about maybe bringing in people, I forgot if it was from a college or something like that. These are things we should have discussed as a board, so the public could have heard it.
Nancy, what we're looking at are the charter amendments, and none of that is in here. I don't know what you're referring to, but
That was in the report the committee gave us, and I couldn't even ask the questions the night they were here.
Nancy, Nancy, we're in a public hearing on the charter amendments. Is there anything you want to say to number 6, which is the
Just, I support everything Kelly did. I think we're opening the door in the wrong way.
All right. Anyone else? It's got to be a short hearing. Anything else you want to bring up? Oh, yes, please.
Good evening. My name's Jackie Matz. I'm a resident of Bennington, Vermont. I was the Chair of the Charter Review Committee. In full disclosure, I'm also a candidate for the Select Board this year. I'm not going to speak on that. I just wanted to add some context, maybe, to the discussion that's been going on here. I think it's easy to paint me as a trans person, as anti-cop, but -- oh, am I not allowed enough? Sorry. I think it's easy to paint me as a trans person, as being somehow anti-police, but I think my history will show that that's not true. The focus of the Charter Review Committee during that time was not on the Police Department, it was on the Charter Review Committee and making changes there. But I think that, for me, the same sentiment that the Charter Review Committee had regarding CPARB was -- is the same sentiment that I have regarding the Police Department, that I think these agencies should be well-resourced to provide the services that we've asked of them. That was the impetus for adding this recommendation relating to CPARB, and I think the Police Department, we ask a lot of them. And one of the ways that we can resource our And one of the ways that, that we can resource our police department to serve our community most effectively is by allowing an organization like CPARB to have input into their process and to be able to provide that perspective from the community to the police department. The police department has a great platform. They come here, they give updates, they, they provide a lot of input from the department to the community, and the community deserves that same chance to, to provide input into the police department. I think this spans further than just the Advisory Review Board in terms of the other tools that we make available to our police department, including trainings in, in de-escalation, in medical training, in, in all these different things, because we ask so much of them, and, and we deserve to give them all the help there. So the, the ability for CPARB to look at some, some sensitive data is, like Jeanne described, was part of the original vision for CPARB. When we had a conversation with, with members of CPARB, every one of them said, "We're not doing anything effective here. We think this board should be disbanded. This is a complete failure of a group." And so the recommendations we made were designed to make that board become effective in a way that they haven't been for our community.
Thank you.
Could I say something?
Sure.
Hi, good evening. Jackie, I want to make it clear to you and everyone else in this community, I personally have never heard or perceived you or the members of the committee as being the least bit anti-cop or hostile to the Bennington Police Department. On a personal level, for whatever it's worth, when we voted or chose the members, I want you to know that you were the number-one person I and other people on this board recommended for this committee. Okay? So I want you to be 100% clear in your mind that you are well-respected, and your views are not at all considered anti-cop or somehow hostile to any entity in this town. So I want to make that quite clear to you and to the public at large, that I, speaking for Clark Adams, hold Jackie in great esteem for the good work she's done and the good person she is.
Anyone else want to speak? So we're not, we're not doing a back-and-forth, and, and everyone gets to speak once before anyone second. So is there anyone else who wants to speak to any of these charter amendments? All right, Kelly, you're back up.
I'm not really sure how to take what Ms. Matts just-
I want to be really careful. Kelly, please be careful.
I will be very careful, because I do not recall anti-cop or anything gender-related being said this evening. So I want to clarify that. And I also do not recall being parts of any conversations with the Charter Review Committee saying that CPARB should be disbanded. I'll admit that we're a new board, and we've made some mistakes. I think there's things we should have done differently. I should have given our Select Board liaison a couple of pieces of paper. I didn't take full responsibility of that. But never would I call the board a failure with the, with all of the community outreach we've done. Now, if you have an oversight agenda, we are a failure, because that's not what we're meant to be. And that's not what the Select Board meant for CPARB to be. And there were things that you wanted CPARB to be able to do at the beginning, and we couldn't. But I just want to make sure that the, you know, the, the members of CPARB that I've spoken with, I don't recall being in any conversations, and there were some, that there were a couple of us in there with the Charter Review, saying that the board should be disbanded. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, because I think CPARB, for the amount of, of what is expected from them with volunteers, and you're adding possibly video footage, that's going to take a lot of time, I just think that that all needs to be taken into consideration. And I really do think that people need to read that report. So thank you.
I do want to be very clear that there has been one instance where, where a review has been appropriate to do, and that was the one review that the Select Board has done. So the providing that right does not change the fact that it happens really rarely, but when it does happen, someone will review it. And so, you know, I think the question, the question on the ballot is not if, it's who reviews that, that footage. And, and, you know, Clark, please chime in here, but when, and Jean, when CPARB, when the task force met and came up with CPARB, and the Select Board approved that, our, our sense was that there was quite a bit to be gained by an organization that was working collaboratively with the police to also be working with them in a collaborative fashion if there felt like, if it felt like the review that they did of a complaint was not sufficient. And I will say that when the Select Board did this on our one occasion, it was really eye-opening. And what we learned about what a day in a, in a police officer's life is like, what the day in, in a suspect's life is like, what, where those things intersect, where there is miscommunication, how we can make community policing better and more collaborative, and what partners need to be brought in to really make a difference in our community. It was, it was, it was, I think, it was, it was a really important process we went through. But, but as a board at that time, we did not feel that the Select Board was the group that should be experiencing that, but that CPARB should. So whether you vote for it or not, the question is not whether there should be a review of complaints, it's who does that review? Should it be the Select Board, which is the default, or should it be the organization, the Community Policing Advisory Review Board? That's all that question is asking.
I want to echo Jeanne's commentary, but as a member of the founding group, the word "review" was really, really, to use the other Jeanne's words, wordsmith. We really belated that. And there were some elements of the committee who thought CPARB should be almost, almost an advocacy group, and again, through a lot of gnashing of teeth and wringing of hands, we realized that no, advocacy was not appropriate, nor was oversight. You know, the idea of members of the community coming together and being able to review the process and come to the Select Board with their assessment of how these complaints or circumstances were handled. And we made recommendations, which, as Jeanne mentioned, kind of crossed over the line with Dillon's Law, so we had to backtrack on some of the things that we really thought were important. I remember last spring, when we were talking about forming this Charter Review Committee, it popped back into mind how previously, when I was on the committee, the discussion of how important it was to have these Charter Review changes approved by the legislature and subsequently the governor, after the will of the people is expressed. I thought it was important that we revisit that. And, you know, I voted for the verbiage that we're discussing tonight, because I, I think it, in fact, is reflective of the intent, why CPARB was formed, and what the Select Board hopes to accomplish. Where, where things can be in six months to a year, I don't know. I don't think anyone here can say that. But I think at this point in time, the mindset is that we need a group of individuals from the community who are doing the community's good work in both directions, helping the police do their job better, but also ensuring that citizens are being well-served by the police, and we on the Select Board are facilitating that. So I know I was long-winded, but that's what I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for the public hearing on charter amendments? We'll give it that famous three, three minutes? Should we wait? I'm looking at you, Deb. Yeah, just think. Anything you have a question about or comment about? Well, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The ayes have it. All right, good. Thank you all for participating in the public hearing. This was the second and last public hearing before we vote on March 4th, and have town meeting on March 3rd. Okay, so let's move on to the Select Board, the rest of the Select Board, or Select Board agenda. First up is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of January 15th, 22nd, 27th, and 28th, and the warrants, and some liquor license.
Jeanne, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
It's warned to start at 6:30.
So I did ask the town manager that question, and he said no, because it's, we are often off-time.
Really?
That we don't have to wait to 6:30.
Okay. I seem to remember a judge ruling otherwise with the school board meeting, they started
Well then, Jean, we will take a 20-minute break.
I, believe me, I want to start too, but do you remember that?
No, I don't. But you know what? You just scared me. So-
It's, I mean, what if there was someone coming-
Unless you want to speed dial Merrill, I don't have her phone number.
No, but, but think about it. I mean, if someone wanted to make a public comment, they would miss the public comment.
Yeah.
So I remember, we were pretty angry that that happened.
Oh, a school board meeting.
At a school board meeting.
Oh, yeah, I do. Okay. Well, yeah.
What if we move through the consent agenda and then stop before a public comment?
I suppose. That takes no time at all, but we could.
We shall see.
We could do that. Right. Right. Okay. Good compromise. All right. All right. Back, looking for a motion then, for the purpose of discussion on the consent agenda to accept the consent-
I'm asking that we do each one separately.
Yep. You want to do each separately? Meaning each set of minutes or minutes separate from warrants?
Each minutes.
Okay. So, starting with minutes of, okay, so could I have a motion to accept the minutes of January 15th?
So moved.
Excellent. Great. Okay. All right. Any discussion?
I'm going to question, under Vermont state law, how this executive session met the legal
The reason that we had an executive session is, I will read it directly, "At 6:31 PM, the board voted to enter executive session for a matter involving contracts for which the premature general public knowledge would clearly place the municipality at a substantial disadvantage. The motion carried unanimously." That is the reason.
And let me, let me note, Nancy, that you were present.
And you voted unanimously.
Thank you.
And I also asked, after that happened, would we be hearing or discussing anything that would need to be kept confidential from the public?
And you were told yes.
No, I was told no, because if I'd been told yes, I would have left the meeting, and I said that.
I'm sorry, anything that happens in an executive session is 100% confidential.
But, but I made a point of saying, are we going to hear anything or discuss anything the public can't hear?
Oh, what you asked was, are we hearing anything that will not be taken to the public? And we said, everything that we'll discuss will come to the public in a public, in a publicly warned meeting. It's a different-
But there was, but there was nothing-
Nancy, Nancy-
Jeanne, anybody who looks at who was at the meeting can figure out what we discussed. And my concern from the start, I didn't want to hear her talk about anything that the public wasn't going to hear. And when I asked that question, I was told, yes, the public was going to hear everything.
And they did.
So I questioned why we had the executive session.
Nancy, that is often the case. It is because premature general public knowledge would clearly place the municipality at a substantial disadvantage.
Point of order, this was discussed, voted unanimously, this board agreed to go into executive session. Nancy White was at the meeting and voted.
And I asked after we voted.
Point of order.
So you've made your, you've made your, your comment. Any, any other discussion before we vote? Not, seeing none? All right. All those in favor of the January 15th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining, please-
Abstain.
Okay. So you got that, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. We might get to 6:30. All right. January 22nd minutes. All right. Any, could I have a motion to-
Motion to approve the January 22nd minutes, please.
Second, Sarah Perrin.
Great. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Line 28 on page one. It should be, Leslie Addison encourages that technology be updated to allow those to participate who can't physically attend meetings.
Good point. Okay. Anything else?
That's our main change in the meeting.
Doesn't it? Anything else? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the January 22nd amendments, minutes with that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that unanimous?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So no nays and no abstentions. All right. Okay. Next up, could I have a motion on the, to accept the minutes of January 27th?
So moved.
Second, Sarah Perrin.
All right. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
You said the 27th? I thought we just did the 27th.
No, we did the 22nd.
Oh, okay. Nope, I'm all set then.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Yep.
All right. No nays, no abstentions. All right. Excellent. And then, the 28th, could I have a motion to accept the minutes of January 28th?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Nancy, sorry.
Lots of questions. Starting with the bottom of page six. Oh, whoops, nope, sorry, that's the wrong one.
Do you have a line number?
No, I'm on the wrong one.
This is the last set of minutes.
Well, I screwed it up. No, I've got notes all through it. Wasn't the 28th? Yeah, here it is. I guess I'm on the wrong page. Page four, starting on line 111. It says, "Grant from a fund balance." Is this a town fund balance?
Yes. You voted on this in public here and in public meeting.
Okay, shouldn't it say who the grant is going to?
Yes. You were here, Nancy, and you voted for this.
Jeanne, I'm asking-
So this is the- So, this is the, so if you recall, there was a slide that indicated the three sources of funding for Ben High. So, $2,980,000 is coming from ARPA funds. The sale of the current senior center at $400,000. And then, we voted to provide a grant to Hail Resources from the fund balance of $20,000. And that, that was the entirety of the funding on the part of the town to Hail Resources for Ben High.
Well, I'll come back to that in another one. Further down on one line, line 118. Where it says to offset, well, line above it, it says, at 1450 a square foot, the cost is $391,000 a year. On line 119, it says plans to offset $275,700. The next line says, current annual rent town is paying recreation space. Well, this doesn't say, where is the money we're going to take to send to the Ben High?
So Nancy, this is exactly, the plan to offset the $275,700 comes from, current annual rent town is paying for recreation space, savings from reduced YMCA management agreement. So these are notes from the hearing that we were all at, or the meeting we were all at, and they are directly from the slides.
I have the slides, and the slide doesn't provide the breakdown. That's why I'm asking the question.
What do you mean it doesn't provide the breakdown?
Well, you're throwing numbers out here, but you don't say what, where this actual money is actually coming from, for example.
Nancy, this is the, these are the minutes, you were at the hearing.
The time to ask those questions, Nancy, was at the meeting. These are minutes from the meeting, we can't change what happened now.
Well, Tom, what I'm saying is, two hours into the meeting, you rushed the vote, I didn't begin to even be able to ask my questions.
Nancy, not only was the hearing, was the meeting, two and a half hours long, but I asked, were there any more questions from the select board, were there any more questions from the public? There was absolutely, there was absolute silence, and so I called the vote, and then you said, oh, I didn't know we were ending so quickly, I have some more questions. And so you began to ask questions, and the questions you began to ask had nothing to do with the agreement, but in fact, were, I think, the last question I recall, was whether there would be playground equipment, which has nothing to do with us, that's not the town's portion, it has nothing to do with the contract. And so it was completely off topic, so we called the question.
Can I make a point of order? On line 336, the motion carried with Nancy White against, Nancy voted no.
I know.
That was the end of that discussion. All of this was covered in that very long hearing.
Okay, so I'm gonna, so these are the minutes, so this is not a rehash of whether you understand it or not, this is the minutes.
On page three, it says, line 102, 59 new jobs will be created. Well, if you go further on in the minutes, it says, no, there would be 25 jobs created.
I think, you asked how many permanent jobs versus construction jobs.
That's correct, that is my memory.
There were two different questions that were asked. Nancy, this...
Jeanne, the minutes need to be correct.
They are correct, Nancy.
Line two says 59 new jobs, 92 construction jobs.
Go, tell me where you are.
Page three, 102, 59 jobs. If you go further along, well, I've got to look and see where I wrote it down, further on, it does say, Zach does say, 25 new jobs.
I can clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we want to correct the minutes, I believe in the presentation, it says 59 new and retained jobs. So there are 25 new jobs, and then, no, whatever that...
Oh, and retained, okay.
Yeah, and then...
So we could put new and retained, would that work?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so 59 new and retained jobs, and 92 construction jobs, that's, so that's accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also, to your other point, Nancy, Dan and I worked on all of that, those ways to offset the costs, and we have a breakdown. So, I'm happy to sit with you and kind of walk through what that breakdown is.
But the breakdown should have been provided in the slides. So the public and the board and everybody could look at this and understand.
Nancy, we're reviewing the minutes. It is not, if you didn't like the presentation, I'm sorry, it was very, very thorough, and we had two and a half hours of discussion.
Our citizens waited four years for information.
No, they didn't, and I'm going to stop you there. We're doing the minutes, is there anything else on the minutes that you have a question about?
No, I'll wait to the end, to the end of the meeting.
Okay. Under other business, I am assuming? Okay. Any other questions on the minutes of January 28th? Seeing none. All those in favor with the correction that was just made, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay. Nancy's no, any abstentions? No abstentions, all right, thank you. We're getting pretty close. All right, so, let's move on to the warrants. Could I have, the warrants and licenses, let's take those together. Could I have a motion to accept the warrants and the liquor licenses?
So moved.
Second, Sarah Perrin.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yeah.
I have a question for my own edification here. I see Class 1 and Class 3 renewals, both listed for Public House. I don't understand the difference, or what's going on there.
You know, I was trying to remember today. So, Class 1 is being able to sell it, Class 2 is being able to serve it, and Class 3 is also liquor, I believe is the breakdown, is the breakdown?
Class 1 is beer and wine at a restaurant, Class 2 is selling it from a store.
Okay.
And Class 3 is liquor.
Okay.
Oh, okay, all right.
And so you could have multiple licenses?
Oh, no, I, obviously, I just couldn't, I didn't understand the actual breakdown, you know, just, like, a few people here, I've had a few in there, and I never realized I was crossing licenses.
All right, good question. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of accepting the warrants and licenses, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks unanimous, any no's, any abstentions? All right. Good. And with four minutes, to stretch your legs, guys. We will come back in four minutes to continue the meeting.
Hi, so I'm Sue Andrews, I live in North Bennington. I'm here tonight as a longtime member of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Bennington, which is on the corner of School Street and Pleasant Street. I wanted to share that we have opened, as of last week, a warming program, we're calling it the Warming Place, for people who are living on the streets, who need a place to get warm. The program will be open from now through mid-April, and it's being held, it's limited hours, Monday and Thursday afternoon, from 1 to 4. We've put a lot of thought into this program, we've done a lot of program development, we have a big fat manual, and lots of training protocols, and all that kind of thing, and we're very happy to share them with other groups, if other groups are interested in emulating this approach. We opened a week ago, we've already had five different guests. It's interesting seeing who comes in. We had a couple guests who are people who are currently eligible for the emergency housing program that the state does, because of disability. But we've had three people who are between the ages of 19 and 64, who have no disabilities, who are not eligible, and so they, they have been sleeping on the street during this last sort of four to six weeks. And it's been interesting talking with them, helping them do things that we got, gave away some tents, some sleeping bags, clean socks, some boots that weren't wet, that kind of thing. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that this is happening, and as I said, we would be very willing to share our program information with anybody who's interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And then, Kate Canning, on Code Blue Response.
Hello, my name is Kate Canning, and I'm a member of the Bennington community, and I've lived here over 50 years, and during that time, I've been an active member of the community, and, and I'm just wanting to take a minute of your time to talk, like Sue did, about the issues of warming shelters, and the lack of a Code Blue response system in this community, and I know it's something that the board has talked about many times over many years, but it still distresses me to think that there isn't a plan in place to have an overnight shelter in situations of extreme cold. Tonight's supposed to be 12 degrees, according to the newspaper, and I think that there is a real need, and sort of a civic responsibility that we have to address this situation at some point, in a way that's a plan, you know, something that's concrete, something that people know about, can point to, and something that I know is not necessarily the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen, but I think it is a town responsibility, and so I'm appealing to you all to get it on to the agenda again, and I think it probably is almost too late for this year's heating season, but I think at some point in time, this need really needs to be addressed in some concrete kind of way. Lots of you have been reading newspaper articles, and listening to the radio, just like I have, and according to the NPR report that was published recently, and talked about again today on Vermont, the Vermont Agenda Program at noontime. There have been, since December 21 through December of '24, there have been 82 homeless deaths in Vermont. Now, they haven't all been in the winter, but many of them have been, and they've been a combination of resulting from the cold, but I'm aware too, that it has an awful lot to do with lifestyle, it has to do with addiction issues, substance abuse, alcohol abuse, mental health issues. There's a lot of reasons for these, but the tragedies still remain, because these people are people's family members, they're people's friends, and it's just sad to me to think that there's a person who died last week in a shed on a ball field in Morrisville, and somebody else died in a pod in Burlington, a homeless pod in Burlington. And there was even a person who died in a dumpster, and was crushed in Heinzville several years ago, and was identified by a tattoo. I know we've had one death... I know we've had one death in Bennington, and I'd like to think that we won't have another. So that's my appeal to all of you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kate. Please don't interrupt. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment? Yes, please.
I think there's another list that you forgot to add.
Oh, is there?
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you, Ken Millman, Bennington, Vermont.
Oh, it's you, okay.
Saturday, there's a River Walk, the February River Walk. We're going to honor Joni Charbonneau for her work at His Pantry and as a master gardener, her work around the town. The organization we're going to highlight is His Pantry. And we are also having a candidate walk. So we have Beau Alexander, Kelly Carroll, Tom Haley, Martha Mackey, Jackie Matts, Jack Rosserd-Mundly, and Jim Sullivan, all coming. So this is a great time to meet the candidates and help make a decision and vote in March. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And then on my second list, Jason, I can talk to you about BAM later if you want. Go ahead if you want.
It's more of an announcement. Good evening, Select Board leaders, town employees, and members of our wonderful community. A few short weeks ago, I stood at a Select Board listening session and suggested creating a downtown brick-and-mortar space where local artists and artisans could display and sell their work year-round. Little did I know that those words would set something incredible in motion. After this session, I met with Dan Zwinberg, and he invited me to a meeting at Jay's Art Shop. We discussed the possibility of transforming the space into a hub for local art and craftsmanship, where talent could be showcased year-round. For years, I've seen our community support and celebrate the arts, but we've lacked a permanent dedicated space for local artists to display and sell their work beyond occasional festivals or events. Our downtown area has great potential, and artists deserve a platform that allows their creativity to be showcased consistently. This is where the Bennington Artisan Market, B-A-M, BAM, comes into play. The vision is simple, to create a space where local artists can display and sell their work year-round, engage with the community, and provide a dynamic hub for creativity. It's a place where workshops, exhibitions, and hands-on activities are part of the experience. By doing this, we not only support local artists, but also bring fresh energy and vibrancy to our downtown, creating a destination for both visitors and residents alike. In just over a week, this idea has gone from a conversation to real progress. We've toured the space, had discussions with local leaders, and begun shaping the vision for the Bennington Artisan Market. This opportunity is one to breathe new life into a space that has been a cornerstone of our arts community for over 50 years. Jay's Art Shop, under the guidance of Jay and Jones Zwinberg, has long been a place where local artists found supplies, custom framing, and a creative community. It's more than just a store. It's been a gathering spot for Bennington's artistic spirit. What if we could continue this legacy? What if we could take this space and transform it into a vibrant hub for local artists, makers, and our community? The Bennington Artisan Market could be a place where art is not only celebrated but actively supported through workshops, retail spaces for handmade goods, custom framing, art supplies, and a gallery for local exhibitions. By creating this space, we provide local artists with the tools to thrive and bring our community together through shared creative experiences. I'm grateful to Dan and his family for their willingness to explore this idea and to all the leaders who have offered their support. This is an idea that could breathe new life into Bennington's downtown while honoring its artistic heritage. This vision is still in its very, very early stages, but I share it with you because I believe in the power of community. Together, we can create a space where artists can thrive and everyone in Bennington can experience the vibrancy of our creative community. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm excited for what's to come, and I'm grateful for your support in making this vision a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. That's a wonderful idea. I just want you to know, there is another organization called BAM, which is Bennington Area Makers, which is what, yeah, so, yeah, which runs robotics courses. So, different BAM, different BAM. All right. So as is our, oh, you want to speak? Debbie, come on, Deb, come on up. If I say Debbie, you'll say dab. If I say dab, you'll say Debbie.
Debbie Matt, Bennington. I hate to be beating a dead horse here, but the Ben-Hi project, as you all know, I'm not in favor of. I'm curious as to how much money we have currently put into it. I know we're paying monthly rent. I know we're paying the taxes up there. I wonder, are we also paying the water and sewer? And are there other things that we are paying? And is the money that we are paying, is that part of the 3.4 million that the town is putting in up there? They haven't even broken ground up there, and they've already asked for pretty near double the rent on the square footage. And he's going to get a huge tax break for 10 years, according to the paperwork that I've read. And how much is it going to cost the taxpayers a year to pay for that compared to now? And I am very concerned about splitting the senior center and the Meals on Wheels up. I know it's over-financial that they cut the Meals on Wheels out. And I think some of the mistakes that have been made up there shouldn't have been made, that Dan Monk's came to meeting after meeting and said that all the hazardous waste had been taken out of there. And now we found out that it's going to cost, I know part of it is going to be a million dollars, I don't know how much the other part is. And if this goes under, are we going to be on the hook for the payment of the place?
All right, great. So why don't we start with Ben-Hi and we'll work back to warming shelter?
Jean.
Yeah. We've got more? Oh, Kelly, come on up.
I didn't realize you had two sign-up sheets.
Me either. Oh, you're not on either one of them?
I didn't get on either one. I would have signed up on the second one, but my apologies. Kelly Carroll, Bennington resident. I actually have three announcements. I'll keep it under three minutes, I promise, Jean. First of all, CPARB will be holding our first public safety forum on Wednesday, February 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Mount Anthony Union High School auditorium. Our panelists will include Chief Paul Doucet from Bennington Police Department, Lieutenant Stephen Coote from the Shasberry Vermont State Police Barracks, Bennington State Attorney Erica Marthage, Dr. Alia Reeve, UCS Medical Director, and Bennington Town Manager Stu Hurd. We will be talking about CPARB's role. We're going to be talking about factors and prevention strategies impacting community-level violence. We're going to talk about the current violent crime rate in Vermont and Bennington. And we're going to have a conversation to help understand why offenders of serious crime are often released without any jail or prison time, as well as the many risks that vigilanteism can provide, either to other citizens or to our law enforcement and to the individuals themselves. CAT TV will be covering this live. We will be having childcare from the Y. You will have to pre-register that. Jonas Vivek is working on getting more information out. That'll be coming out soon. So that's my first one. Secondly, VFW Post 1332 will be hosting a Mardi Gras celebration on Friday, February 28th. This is going to be a 1920s-themed speakeasy fundraising event for the Bourbon Street New Year's Day attack victims through VFW Post 8973 in New Orleans. Tickets are $20 and they're open to the public. You do need to be 21. You will need a ticket and a password for entry because it is a speakeasy. We'll have music, games, costume contests, so check out the VFW's Facebook event page. And if you're not a member, ask one of them about joining. And then lastly, I am running for Bennington Select Board. I will be at the Walloom Sack River Walk Candidate Walk that Ken spoke about on Saturday, February 15th. I'll be attending the CAT TV and Bennington Banner Candidate Forum on Monday, February 17th. Unfortunately, I will not be at the other candidate forum at the end of the month because of the scheduled conflict with CPARB's Public Safety Forum. Both events will be recorded, so I encourage you to attend one and watch the other. And I also encourage everyone to vote on March 4th. If you don't have, if you're not registered, please reach out to the town clerk. If you would like to have a ballot mailed to you, please reach out to the town clerk. They will not be automatically mailed like they were in November. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I think, just correct me if this is not accurate, but the A U W Forum was canceled. Yes, so it's not happening.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? I'm looking up this time. No? Okay, all right.
We're right on time.
Well, no. So, almost. So, just the follow-ups. Ben-Hi, I want to remind everybody, I'm going to turn this over to you in a moment, Shannon, but I want to remind everyone, this is a public-private partnership. The public, the town's commitment to this is literally the amount of money that we talked about, the 3.4 million, from the three sources. The rest of the cost is all borne by SAC. It is not by, not by SAC, but by Hail Resources and those that have invested in the project. That is not town money. Once the project, oh, once the building's open, we're leasing space, so we will pay, we will pay rent there because it's not our building. But we won't be paying rent at the sports center, for instance, where we currently have many of our recreation activities happening. So, the hazardous waste piece, the hazardous waste, it was, we had a presentation on that. I think they were very clear that once you start opening walls up, you expose hazardous waste that was previously encapsulated and was not a concern. And so, again, the Hails are responsible for that cost and for that remediation. And the state was very clear, or the consulting group was very clear about how that happens. And then I don't know if there's anything else you want to address.
I think just your question about the cost that we've carried to, you know, can keep Ben-Hi, you know, paying the utilities, et cetera, is part of that 3.4 million. So that was all what we called pre-development. So those carrying costs are part of that total cost.
All right. All right. So hopefully, hopefully, all the materials for Ben-Hi, Jean just reminded me, are up on the website, the latest slides as well, as well as you can watch the presentation at that special meeting. So, you know, please feel free to go on CAT TV's website and look at that, at that program, if that's helpful. Just want to clarify, there is a code blue response system in place. There is a plan. It's not a great plan. We are working to improve that plan, but there is a plan. Unfortunately, the regional shelter for Bennington County is in Rutland. It is run by Brock in Rutland. There are motel vouchers available, and actually, this afternoon, several of us were on emails, talking with Adam Sansick from the Agency of Human Services. There are still motel, emergency motel vouchers available. And if there are no motels available, if there are no rooms available in this community, there is transportation to motels in other communities. So I do not want you to think there is no plan. What is happening, there are a bunch of things happening right now, but there are several people in this room, and there's some Select Board members, and our police chief is working night and day on this, is trying to really clarify where people can go in a heat emergency and where they're going to be able to go in a cold emergency. Our emergency shelter, unfortunately, or fortunately, is the middle school. And that puts some real constraints on how we can use that building because it's also a school. So there are a lot of things in place. I want to remind people that this Select Board, most of the Select Board, and the town lobbied very, very hard to make sure that, oh, God, it just went out of my head, that, what are they called? Oh, Pathways. That Pathways was able to come to this community to help with housing of vulnerable populations, including people that are recently released from prison. They've done their time, they're out in the community, but not with any safety net. So Pathways has been, has been something that we've added to this community to help with housing needs, as have been the two transition shelters that are now being built, the transition housing for those in recovery, the two recovery houses. And that, again, is an important step. I think, as someone mentioned, when people are living on the street, there are often very complicated issues that have put them there. And so we are trying to be very proactive. Turning Point has been phenomenal in this community. They got a grant from the state, and they have been going out to encampments weekly, bringing sleeping bags, bringing tents, bringing food, bringing Narcan, bringing companionship, and really trying to encourage relationships so that people will come in and see Turning Point if it's, if it's an effective organization for them. We also have Housing Group in town that is looking at homelessness from the pipeline perspective. If you want to get into housing, as we all know, we have a housing crisis. If you go into Section 8 housing, if you end up, if you want to go into the Bennington Housing Authority housing, there has to be room there. And in order for there to be room there, there has to be room and affordable housing for somebody to move out of Section 8. And if you're in affordable housing and you want to move into market-rate housing, there has to be that housing. So we are very aware of that. And, you know, I think Putnam Facility, the Putnam Block, Phase 1, Ben-Hi, and private developers like both the Hails and Lilly West have been really important in this community in expanding the housing that we have. And the last thing I want to say, and I know I'm going on, but I think, I think it's really important that this community understand everything that is being done and that we understand it is a really horrible situation as well, and we are trying to work on it. The BENSTAT Initiative that the police department, that the police chief talked about a couple weeks ago, which is short for Bennington Statistics, where the Rescue Squad, the police department, Turning Point, Economic Services of Department of Family and Children, and others, I can't, UCS, meet and look at where they're getting high call volumes and from whom, and then look at how to provide wraparound services to that individual if they want those services, so that agencies can talk to one another and you can start to address the reasons that people are living on the street or are having, or are calling the Rescue Squad five times a day, you know, whatever that, whatever that issue is. And I think that that is, I think what the chief was very clear with us about was that being proactive and really trying to address issues before they get to the point where someone is living on the street is far preferable to trying to figure out what to do after they're already in dire straits. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't solve, it doesn't solve our problem, but I want to say that we are working on it, and it is not that there aren't plans in place. They're just not adequate. They're just not adequate to what we honestly need as a community. So, you know, and I'm, you know, looking at people that have been attending, you know, these weekly, bi-weekly meetings for several months now, and it's slow-going, but we're making progress, and hopefully, we will get to a better place. So, that's my two cents. Anyone else want to say anything on those issues?
Put here.
All right. So, let's move on then. All right. Our agenda item for tonight is the Social Services Ballot Procedure. And the reason it says ballot procedure is because, for some crazy reason, we no longer have a policy. We had a policy that we put in place in 2020, and then, when we reviewed this last year, we apparently did away with the policy, and what we replaced it with were two documents, which are in your, in your packet, that are memos from Stu.
The policy is still on the town website.
No, it actually, if you look under the policies for the Select Board, it's actually been replaced. So, I, so I did give you a copy of the 2020 policy. And so, what I would suggest that we do tonight is we look at the two procedure, procedural memos that, that we have, and we look at the statute and probably look at the old policy, which was a dumb policy because it only, in the policy, it only, it gave numbers for 21, 22. I don't underst, 2021, 2022. So, anyway, so what I think we should do is look at the procedural memos, look at the statute that gives social service organizations the right to be included on the town ballot, and may, and see if we're satisfied with the procedures we have in place, and then ask the town staff to put together a policy that would come back before this board after, you know, after April 1. Because the, the old policy is basically these two memos with two lines in front of it, but it needs to be cleaned up so that it's more general and doesn't have the specific dates in it. Does that make sense? So, so I think, look at the statute, and, you know, is this, look at the statute so you know who we're talking about. This is only for social service organizations to be petitioning on the ballot, and then look at the requirements for both those in, both those on the ballot and those that are in the budget, and see if you have any concerns about either one of those procedures.
Are we doing this, like, in live time right now?
We're doing it right now. That's, that is our agenda item, is to, is, is to look at this. So, does anyone, did you, I mean, do you have any concerns?
This I just got.
Yeah, I might suggest we have a committee to do that and bring it back to the Select Board.
No, this, this, the policy that you have in front of you is nothing more than these two procedures with a line at the top that says, "Whereas 24 VSA Section 2691 provides the municipalities may appropriate money for the support of social service programs and facilities within the town of its residents. Now therefore..." That's the only thing, that's, that's the policy.
Okay. I'm curious why this is so urgent right now.
Because we have to review all of the, we voted to review all of our policies before March 31st if they had not been reviewed in the last two years.
Okay. I'm not a fan of doing this on the.
So, I just want to reiterate, I'd like to have a committee to bring this back to the Select Board, form a committee for that purpose.
We don't have that, we don't have that time, honestly. The question is, did, did people read through what was in the packet?
Well, yeah.
Okay. So, do you have any concerns about it?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we form a committee to bring this back to the Select Board.
Someone want to second that?
I didn't hear what she said.
I'd like to make a motion that we form a committee to bring this back to the Select Board with the recommendations, excuse me.
No, we don't need to, we don't need a committee.
Do we have a second for the motion? Okay. So, the motion fails. No, I'm sorry. So, let's, all right. So, so all I'm asking tonight is, let's look at the two, let's look at the procedures that are in place already. One is for agencies that are in the budget, and there are four of them. BRC, Rescue Squad, two libraries. Thank you. And there's six in the budget. There, well, this is talking about agencies in the budget.
Well, well, we have six in the budget now.
Okay, so, all right. So, yeah, and so then we also have North Bennington Village, Parks.
And North Bennington Recreation.
And we have Lake Perrin.
Yeah, so that's six.
Yeah, okay.
Is the board going to be able to add another social services groups automatically into the budget?
Can you look at the statute? No. So, the statute reads, "At a meeting duly warned for that purpose, a town or incorporated village may appropriate such sums of money as it deems necessary for the support of social service programs and facilities within the town to its residents. Social service programs for which a town or incorporated village may appropriate sums of money include transportation, nutrition, medical, childcare, and other rehabilitative services for persons with low incomes, elders, children, persons with disabilities, persons with a substance use disorder, and persons requiring employment to eliminate their needs for public assistance." Okay? The authority herein granted is not in derogation of other local powers to allocate funds. And then, we have a policy on how one can petition. And that policy is placed, is the agencies placed on the ballot. So, we don't have any social service organizations in, in the, in the budget unless you consider the Rescue Squad a, a social service organization. I'm not sure that.
Okay, I'll use the word nonprofit. Can we add any more nonprofits into the town budget without voter approval ahead of time? I mean, there's never been voter approval, but can more nonprofits be automatically added into the budget?
The, the decision to put a nonprofit, so I'm going back to Rescue Squad. The decision to put a nonprofit in the budget has to be voted on by the Select Board.
And the conversation we're having is about social service agencies, not nonprofits.
Well, but, yeah, I mean, so that's the other, so that is the other one.
So, this is just going to be on a ballot for the voters to decide on.
Yeah. What we're trying to do is look at these two processes that we use currently and make a policy.
Okay. Well, let's talk about getting on the ballot.
Okay.
The voters are not going to be voting on, on this policy, though, if that's what you're thinking.
That's good for clarity. That's not.
The voters are not voting on our policy on how to get on the ballot. We do that.
I'm talking about a, a group that wants to be on the ballot for voter approval for local taxes.
Yes.
We should have the policy that says.
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay. Which one are we looking at?
All right. Look at the one that says, "Agencies placed on the ballot." So, the only agencies that can be placed on the ballot unless this board specifically decided to do that are social service organizations.
Okay. So, we should be able to read, what does that agency have to do? They have to go out and get a certain number of voters on a petition.
That's what this, that's these steps right here.
Are you referring to the memo from Stu dated October 16th, '24?
Mm-hmm. Well, it says they need a letter, they need a copy of their budget, an explanation of the funds, revenues, and a copy of IRS. Now, I don't see anything about requiring them to go out to get the signatures to be on the ballot.
That's, you've never been on the ballot.
That's true. That is true.
And also, what the board voted on five years ago, that I think was wrong, is they allow more than one group to use the same petition, so more than one group can use the same signatures.
Yes, they can, and they did that this time.
And, well, and that's the first time that the board did that five years ago. I think it creates, it, it's unfair. If citizens have to go out to get signatures to get an item on the ballot, each group that wants local tax dollars should have to go out and get their 500 signatures.
All right. That would be, that would be a change.
Well, that's what the board changed five years. They'd never been allowed to do that before that.
Yep. Well, I'm looking at this, though, and it does not, oh, this is a mess. This is a mess because it doesn't give the process. Those agencies meeting this deadline with all necessary documentation will be placed on the ballot without requiring a petition, but no place on here does it explain the petition process.
Right. This is because this is saying all agencies normally placed on the ballot.
It says normally.
If you read the beginning of the memo.
I know, I know, but it doesn't, so it's, okay.
Right.
All right. So, you know what? I, I'm gonna make a version of the, of the motion that you made earlier, Sarah, that says that we want staff to come back with an actual policy for us that's actually complete.
Okay. And there needs to be three to get on the ballot the first time.
Yep.
Normally on the ballot, and if you're increasing, you're ask.
Yep.
Okay. There's three different scenarios.
So, it's like a three-part policy.
One policy, but, yeah. And the other thing I'm just going to say, so, you know, you shouldn't, there shouldn't be specific dates. It needs to be by the first Monday in December, or whatever.
Right. I know, that's, this is crazy. All right. So, we don't, yeah, go ahead, Clark.
I, I was just looking at the statute, and the one question I had here, you know, it talks, "deems necessary for the support of social service programs and facilities." I would just like facilities clarified on our memo, but what, what kind of facilities are we speaking about?
Yeah. So, my understanding of that is that it is social service programs and social service facilities. It's not talking about general facilities.
Yeah, I'm just way ahead of my facilities.
Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, this is statute. Yeah, I agree. I agree, though.
I thought of a part, you know, maybe we could be a bit clearer.
Well, that's a, that's, that could be useful because I think the question that has come up, and I'm, I think there's someone here that probably wants to address, in the audience that wants to address this. Sean Marie, please sit down. We'll call you when we're ready. No, I'm serious.
You know, Jeanne, I would have spoken under public comments, which.
No, you can't speak under public comment on, on an item that's on the agenda, but I promise we will call you. I know, this is, this is muddier than we.
Here's the important difference that I would like to make in the statute.
Okay.
We understand, Sean Marie.
Yeah, we'll get to you, I promise. So, there is, there is lack of clarity. If you look up what is a social service, if you, if you Google, "What is a social service organization in Vermont?", what comes up is Agency of Human Services, that they are administered by Agency of Human Services. If you look at what's in here, it's a little broader. Transportation, obviously, doesn't fall under Agency of Human Services. If you look at, like, a definition in a dictionary, it's, you know, it's sort of helping professions, you know, it, it talks about human services. So, I, yeah, I think a lang, some language that would clarify who is actually covered by this would be helpful. I think there's some danger in doing that because this is statute, and you don't want to, you, you, we can't make it less, we can't make it more restrictive.
No, I understand what you're saying, just again, when I look at.
Yeah. So, so that's another piece, is to get some, some kind of statement at the, at the front end that, that's a little clearer than the statute.
You can't say a nonprofit or volunteer organization.
No, it needs to say social service organization because that's statute.
I, I liked the motion you were about to make, and I, I'm going to actually, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, try.
So, I want to, I'll reword my, my motion. So, the motion on the table right now is to send this back and request that town staff bring forward a policy for us.
Okay. I want to, let's get a second on it, and then I want to allow Sean Marie to, to say what she'd like to say.
I'll have a second.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
I think it's obvious, Shannon, but I'm just going to say it anyway. On the, on the memorandum dated October 16th, 2024, the, the last paragraph, "Failure to submit a complete package," that's not even applicable to an, to a line item on the budget.
No, these are agencies placed on the ballot.
No, no. I'm talking about the other one, where these, these agencies are normally placed in the budget. This bottom paragraph doesn't apply to them.
Oh, right. He should have taken it off. Okay.
Why, why would you not want them to have to?
Because they don't have to petition. They don't do any of those steps.
But they should still have to have their information in for the board.
That's different, but this bottom paragraph is, is talking about, well, maybe it is, maybe it is okay, but it.
It's not clear.
It's not clear.
Everybody should have a deadline to have their information in.
It needs to be different language, I think.
I like your idea of three parts. So, just to reiterate, you said how to get onto the ballot for the first time, the required, this, this piece of the required documents once you are on the ballot, and then how to ask for a change or more than what has, what you've had in the past. So, those are the three pieces?
That's for, that's for a social service agency to get on the ballot as a, as a separate. And then the other ones are included in the budget.
Right.
And it, let's just say, for instance, the Rescue Squad didn't submit one of these requirements. Would they literally not be in the budget?
Yeah. We wouldn't vote, well, we didn't. Remember, we had a question, and we, we.
We made them.
We tabled.
Okay. Just look at that language, and maybe it needs to be tweaked for the, in the budget group and the ballot group.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but they all need to have a deadline because in past years.
Yeah, there is a deadline, and they all met it for the last two years.
But I'm just saying, in past years, a lot of times, there were groups that didn't.
That's why we put a deadline in this.
Let's make sure both groups keep the deadline.
They do. Looks like Shannon's taking notes for this.
They do. Um, can I, one more piece? One more piece is to make a, an opening statement that's very clear about.
About social service agencies.
Yes. About who we're talking about with the statute in mind. Sean Marie, aren't you glad you didn't stand up there? Please.
Sean Marie Oler Bennington, thank you for hearing me out. I wanted to let you know that I sent a letter to Jeanne and Mr. Woods, and I believe it was shared with the full board on, this full Select Board on January 13th. If you don't, I have nine copies of that letter that was, that I think was passed out to the board. The first thing I would like to say is that if you take a look at the statute, there is nowhere in Title 24, Chapter 73, where it says, "Agency." Absolutely nowhere in there. It says, "Social services for town residents." It says, "It deems necessary for support of social service programs." It says, "Its residents." It talks about "social service programs for which a town or incorporated village may appropriate sums." And so, in that letter that I addressed to you, I, I talked about how the, the Tutorial Center, which is a nonprofit and been on the ballot for, I, I don't know how many years, many more than I've been there, how we are not a social service agency, we are also not an education agency, we are not, we don't fall in the statute under that. What we do do is we provide social service programs for all the residents of Bennington and Bennington County. And one of those services is, in fact, literacy. And what I didn't include in that letter that day is the Vermont Department of Libraries defines literacy as "the ability to use printed and written information to function in society, to achieve one's goals and develop one's knowledge and potential through the extensive national, through an extensive nationwide study," and I can give you all the sites, "that 13% of Vermonters aged 16 to 74 are at the lowest literacy level, which is Level 1, at risk for difficulties using comprehension of printed material. 33% are literacy Level 2, able to read print and digital text but still struggle to perform tasks." That's 33%. And I will jump down to, while Vermonters rank third highest in the U.S., this is from 2024, with a literacy rate of 87%, it is the fifth most educated state, according to the census. But there are over 2,300 out-of-school adults age 18 and above without a high school credential. And we provide that service for free. The Tutorial Center provides it. There are four adult education and literacy centers in the state. They cover all 14 counties. The NEKLS in the Northeast Kingdom is on 23 town ballots. The Vermont Adult Learning, which is seven counties, is on 55 town ballots, and CVAE is on 43 town ballots out of the 247. 247 in the state. So I want you, I just wanna point out that this is not, it doesn't have, this doesn't say agencies, so we are not a social service agency, we are not a school, we get federal money, state money, donations, and we have to match some of that money, and, and so we come to the town for that. In fact, Jeanne can attest that it was me that brought the Manchester Guidelines to the town, because the town guidelines were very loosey-goosey until a couple of years ago. And the list that was from October 24 is the same memo that Stu sends out every year if you have been on the ballot. He has a memo, if you want more money, it says you have to get the certain number of signatures, and I call every year to make sure that Beth and Stu have everything they need, because the town has in the past let people who hand in late get on the ballot. And so I feel very responsible for actually bringing this to your attention, and if you'd like another copy of the letter, I'm happy to give it to you. Thank you.
Hi, I apologize, but who, who are you?
Who am I? I am Sean Marie Oler, I am a resident of Bennington, I'm the executive director of the Tutorial Center, which has services in Bennington County. We have sites in Manchester and Bennington, and we work out of the Powell and Arlington Library, and all those other towns were on the ballot as well.
Well, again, from listening to what you just presented, it popped back in my mind where I see the word facilities in here. Seems to me your facility provides, in my opinion, a service to our society, so, if there's something that I've been remiss on or ignorant on, I apologize, but, you know, I greatly appreciate what, what you're doing and the information you've provided to me tonight.
So it's in that letter, and again, I can hand these to Jeanne, the statistics are in a different letter, so.
Thank you. So, that probably is another change we should make, it's not agencies, it's organizations on the ballot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
One more question for clarification? You would like that policy as soon as possible, I'm assuming, because you said March 31st was the...
March 30, all of them have to be reviewed by March 31st, so if we can put it on the next, that would be good.
Okay.
All right.
And one thing I wanna add to it, from this policy I read on the town website this afternoon, it talked about how the board works with the nonprofits, agencies, however you wanna term them, how it used to be. The board would bring in two or three groups each meeting in the fall, each group would have 10 minutes to talk, the board and the public could ask questions, and this is how it went on, I'm thrilled we heard from all of the groups that would be on the ballot. What the board has done the past couple of years, all the groups show up the night before voting, they're given three minutes, they have to rush through, I don't think that benefits anybody, I think we should go back to the way the select board used to do it, give the groups a fair chance to talk, 10 minutes, so the board and the public can ask questions, do it throughout the fall, rather than throwing this all on the ballot, you know, the night before voting.
So Nancy, actually, the, this, this board is the board that started having groups come in, and generally they let us know that they would like to come and share information, so, yeah, they're, they're always, they're always welcome.
Jeanne, I was watching this 25 years ago, this isn't something this board invented, and it was very helpful to listen to the groups and listen to the board and public ask questions.
Yeah, Nancy, no one's disagreeing with you, but they, and they, and they do come, and when they don't come, it's because they have not asked to be on, on the ballot, on the, on the agenda, and as you can see, even when we have a short agenda, it takes a while, so, we, we, you know, habitats coming next, to the next meeting, we, when people ask to be on the agenda, if we can, if we can avail them of the time, we do it.
But this is something the board would automatically do, they would start in the fall, two or three groups?
So you cannot, so I'm, I'm gonna, one thing that this board, that no board can do is tell what future, future boards what they will do, so, we can't set agendas for future boards, but I think we have a motion on the table.
Yes.
From many, many minutes ago.
We also have a second.
Okay, any other discussion?
I wanna say something, but it has nothing to do with the motion.
Can we get a refresher of the motion? I'm sorry.
The motion, for them to bring back, staff to bring the policy to us.
I'm suffering from a migraine.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right, so...
Was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, well, that was...
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the other thing is, people are welcome to go on any of these social services websites and learn way more than they would be able to learn if someone came to a meeting to speak. You know, what happened 25 years ago is probably not applicable to 2025, there is a huge amount of information available, and it's up to the voters to educate themselves, rather than having to, us to spoon-feed everyone, every single thing they need to know. People are more than capable of, of doing their own research to decide how they wanna vote on the ballot item for each social service agency that will appear.
All right, with that, let's move on to the manager's report.
All right, well, in Stu's absence, I'm gonna read his manager's report. So the first item, the Food Truck Festival, the Seventh Annual Food Truck Festival is proposed for downtown Bennington on Saturday, August 16th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. The organizers are requesting to close School Street from Main to Pleasant, and Pleasant from North to School Street, from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. for this event. They've communicated to the fire department, a special events permit has been applied for. So the action request, the action requested is a motion to close the above- referenced streets, as noted.
Could we have a motion to that? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, I just wanna say that we do know that the permit was applied for, and that all, and has all of its, has all the signatures it needs for us to be able to vote on this.
Discussion, I'm going to recuse myself, the permit is right here, applied, as I'm the organizer, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, so, any other discussion on this, any community discussion on this? Right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say no, any abstentions?
Recusing.
Sarah's abstention.
And recusal.
Uh, recu...
What's the difference?
There is a difference.
Yeah, but recusal would mean that she's sitting out there, wouldn't it?
Right, she would have to excuse herself from the table.
Yeah.
I'm excusing myself from the table, moving away.
Okay, come sit down, Sarah, okay, all right, keep going.
Okay, so...
Sarah, now you can come back, we're done.
Okay. All right, additionally, one of the newer employees has decided to move on, Jennifer Morse, our permitting department administrative assistant, has found another job, and Carrie Fabritius from the senior center has stepped up to fill this position. She has the skills and the knowledge of the town to fill this position in a very good way. Stu asked the Y to fill in at the senior center, and they have agreed for a cost of $5,000 per month. There will be a net savings to the town. This move will take place today, February 10th. There also was a PFAS meeting, on February 3rd, the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation held a meeting at our fire facility to update residents of Bennington and Shaftesbury on the recent testing findings and potential solutions to those with contaminated wells. Stu was asked to speak about the Bennington Water System and its potential. Jason Dolmich from MSK spoke on the engineering studies and design done to date. It was a well-attended meeting. For some in Bennington, construction may begin next year to provide municipal water, and if anyone has questions, please contact Stu. Also, as a follow-up, the next select board listening session will be held next Wednesday, February 19th, from 6:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. here at the fire facility.
Super. All right, any questions on the manager's report?
Personnel moves. Just over the past year, I've asked a couple of times when this board would have a discussion of who would run the town senior center if it went to the Ben High. Would our town continue to run it as we have for decades, or would the Y? Couldn't get it on the agenda for a discussion. Two days after the Ben High meeting, I got a call from a senior citizen who told me the woman who runs the senior center had been told she's going to work at the town office, and the Y is taking over the rec center. Now clearly, we had officials who knew this the night of the Ben High meeting. Why was this information withheld from the public and from me? I don't know who else on the board knew about this. And then I got a call that Stu would be at the senior center last Thursday to talk to the seniors about this. So I went to the meeting, no one else from the select board was there, didn't see a camera, don't know if the meeting was recorded, heard some pretty interesting questions and comments, both from the seniors and from Stu. One of the questions I asked was the money the Ben High has already received, either grants or tax credits, that had Meals on Wheels included in the application. I said, won't all that money have to be returned, now that the rest of the board has kicked Meals on Wheels out of the Ben High, and Stu said no? So maybe you could explain...
Can I ask for a point of order? We're talking about the manager's report and a personnel move, I don't know what that has to do with Ben High.
Yeah, I think, I think you're now under other business, so if you can hold that to other business?
No, no, this has to do with personnel, I've, I've asked over the past year.
No, the personnel...
For us to have a discussion about who would run the senior...
Nancy, you, you went into areas of grant funding for Meals on Wheels, having nothing to do with this item on the manager's report.
And this is informational, and personnel issues are not open for public conversation.
And they're not ours.
You're right, Stu did say he hires people for the town, but the select board was supposed to decide...
No, he didn't say that, that is how the charter's set up.
He said that at the senior center.
That is how the charter's set up.
And a senior asked the question, why did he make the decision, not the select board, about the Y taking over the senior center?
Because the charter gives, we hire the town manager, and the town manager hires and supervises all staff, that, that's the way the charter reads.
So every time I brought the question up over the past year, neither of you ever said, well, the select board won't make the decision, we'll have the town manager do that.
No, I think the question, again, let's hold this until, let's come back to it under other business, because right now, we're doing the manager's report, the, there is a difference between what is the structure of a senior center going to look like in the future, as opposed to will the current director be the director? And that question is not a select board question.
That wasn't the question.
So Nancy, I think, hold it, it's, it's, it's a, it's a fair question, but this is not during the manager's report, all, all you're getting is information right here. Any, anything on, anything else on the manager's report? All right, let's move into upcoming agendas. I gave all of us a list of what I thought we needed to do for upcoming agendas, but obviously, we need to add one more thing to it. So, February 24th, the next meeting, Habitat for Humanity is scheduled to come, we have the audit that is scheduled, EV Chargers got bumped to that agenda because Stu isn't here tonight. The ethics policy, which has been bumped three times now, needs to be done, and I will either add the organizations on the ballot to policy to the 24th, or we'll move it to the 10th, okay? And then, so be thinking about if there's anything else we need to have on these agendas. March 10th, the local emergency management plan annex for warm, for heat extremes will be on the agenda, salt, the sand filter will be on the agenda, and then we have three policies that we need to address that are on the agenda. Um, yeah.
I, I want to backtrack, ethics policy, is that town, was that conjunction with the discussion we had evolving with the state ethics law?
Yeah, it's, yes, and, and what happened was, we ran out of time, we ran out of time twice now, so, yeah, so it is, it's related to the state law, yeah. So we do need to, we have an interim policy, but we do need to put it in place. Yeah.
Also, February 24th, the Habitat for Humanity presentation and the audit, is that a presentation as well?
The audit?
Yes.
Yeah, he's coming, yeah, so it's that annual, our audit...
Okay, I just wanted to, I just want, I didn't wanna assume, so that, that will be a lengthy meeting?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Assumption?
Yeah.
Is there any way to bump one of those presentations to a later meeting?
Uh, no, because if you keep, look, if you go down, they're just as, they're just as bad, so...
Are all of those imminent?
So, I mean, what we will do, yeah, they're all imminent, because we have to finish all the policies by March 31st, so that only gives us three meetings, because March, we have four meetings, March 3rd is town meeting, and so that's sort of its own thing. So, so hopefully, some of these, most of these policies are not gonna be, are not gonna be huge, huge things. So the 10th, we have emergency management planning, sand filter, and then three policies. March 24th, there'll be a short proclamation for Career Month that we do every year, which is April, and then we've got three policies. And then, the 14th, on April 14th, you guys will reorganize, Jeanne and I will watch on television, and I would like to request, if you may remember, last year during April Career Month, we had a presentation on workforce and economic update, and we had the Chamber, BCRC, BBC, Department of Labor, and, and Community Development come in and talk about the state of, of the town, and the county, and the state, and so, I would like to request that, that this board consider keeping that date, that is a date that all five of those folks can actually, can come, so...
That's already slated in your mind for April 28th?
Yeah, so that was the date that everybody could come.
Excellent.
I think that's, I think, I appreciate that, but I want to take that off of the agenda, since steer the chair currently, and let the chair that's...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I wanna take that off, just for, just to play it safe.
Well, all this is, all this is, is a draft agenda for you guys, from February, March...
I wanna let the incoming chair decide that, and not, you know, put that in...
Yeah, they will.
In writing right now.
I just wanna put it in your brain, okay?
Yeah.
I appreciate having any institutional knowledge that we can, so thank you for putting that down.
So, it's just there, it's just, it's just a request to think about it, okay.
Can I, I have a...
Yeah, anything else we need to have on an agenda that we know about?
Well, I don't have any skin in the game by the time this comes around, but I don't know if anyone read VT Digger, I think it was yesterday, and I don't know how long the article had been up, I sometimes don't read it every day. There seems to be an issue with salt, road salt.
Oh, yeah.
Going forward, it seems like there's gonna be some state regs on that, so I think maybe it's not gonna, you know, be imminent right now, because we're almost through the winter, hopefully, but I think it's something that the town needs to address, and it'd be interesting if there was a role for the select board to, to play on, or maybe just for informational purposes, on the use of salt, and how it's affecting waterways especially.
Do you see that as something that needs to happen before March 31st?
No, I do not.
Okay, all right.
That's what I said.
So those of you who will be on the board, put that in your...
Yeah, I have no skin in the game when it's gonna happen, but I think it needs to be at least addressed.
Okay.
I took note of it.
For March 10th, the sand filter, is that gonna be the discussion on the bond we're going to ask the voters to go out on for?
I actually have, I have no idea what that discussion is.
I know what it is, because I've heard about it for over two years.
Nancy, we, yeah, so we've all heard the same information, I don't know what the agenda item is, I just know the sand filter is coming up, so that's, that's why, that's all it says. I, I don't know, there's been no conversation about...
And we're not here to discuss it now, we're just...
Well, we were supposed to have discussed it this past year, that's what I'm bringing up.
But we're not here to discuss it now, because it's not on the agenda.
So all I'm trying to do is give you a quick rundown of what I know is coming on draft agendas coming up, so if there is anything else that is pressing that has to be done by March 31st, please let us know, okay? That's all.
Thank you.
All right, okay, other business, Nancy, you're up.
I'm requesting that the chair contact the League of Cities and Towns lawyers. I wanna know if there is now a state law in place that allows a Vermont select board to charge their local taxpayers to subsidize a housing project without local voter approval.
Are you talking about the Ben High project?
Absolutely, and that's what the Ben High is at the end of the day. Our taxpayers...
Our taxpayers have never been asked to subsidize a housing, a housing project for anybody. And to think that we're going to ask homeowners and private property owners to have to subsidize the Ben High is beyond me. For the amount of money we're spending, 3.4 million, we should own that gym in addition. It's ridiculous to charge our taxpayers to rent it. So I want to know if that state law exists. And if not, when are we going to have the town vote?
All right, duly noted.
Second. At our last regular meeting, I asked what the increase on the budget would be. We're putting in front of the voters next month compared to last month. And the town manager said 4.0, I don't know, 4.53 or something.
And then he sent out an email to all of us correcting that because that was before the agencies.
And then when he put his column in the Bennington banner, it went up even more. Now it's over 6%. I didn't write down what the actual increase is. Now that I know the increase is going to be over 6%, I will vote no. And I would urge others to vote no. I've talked for several years.
Nancy, Nancy, you took part in the budget discussions.
And, and they, everyone was told to bring the budget in with a 5% increase. When Stu said it came another 4%, I said, well, that's better. Now that I know it's over 6%. For several years, I've said, we've got too many people that cannot afford town budget increases of 5% or more. And budgets can be cut.
Okay. All right, so, all right, what else?
That's it. I want to know when we're voting on the Ben High.
Oh my God, we voted already.
And I want to know if that state law exists.
I'd asked that question about if anyone could force a vote, and the answer was no.
This board voted.
All right. So those, those, okay, so those two items are duly noted. Sarah, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Ed.
Our friends at the Energy Committee asked me to mention to you all on the Select Board and to the public that they will be present on town meeting night, March 3, to provide appropriate material to Bennington residents and voters. And that comes with an ask. If anyone on the Select Board might be interested in helping them to staff the booth, I believe the booth will be in the back of the room during town meeting that Monday night, March 3. If any of us are available and have a few minutes to spend at that table, they'd appreciate it.
But we're sitting, we are.
That meeting starts earlier because of the school presentations. And so we are available during that very beginning period. Thank you.
Super. That's great.
I'm good. But have we heard if the, the school board meetings are in this building again? Or do people have to run over town again this year?
The tech, the tech center meeting will be here, and the SVSU meeting will be at the SVSU office. And we will be here. Town.
All parties have been asked to reconsider that for the future. Just so you're aware, we're hoping that we can be in one place again.
Hi, I want to go back to my standard response. We all know we had some terrible weather, and I can't thank the DPW guys enough for how well they've taken care of the roads. I came in on the west end. I followed a state snowplow, which I didn't know what they were doing because they weren't doing a good job. But when I hit our streets, they were looking good. So again, thank you to the DPW guys.
Super.
All right. I've got a question for Ed. Are you saying a group wants to set up a table the night before town meeting?
Our Energy Committee, Nancy. The towns, the Bennington Energy Committee will be here to provide appropriate information to voters about items that are of particular interest to the Energy Committee.
And there's going to be actually people staffing the table?
That's correct.
I think that's unfair to all the other groups that wouldn't have the opportunity to do that.
Oh my God.
So I will say, no, stop, stop, stop. I will say that this has been an open invitation for many, many years. And last year, and last year, the Energy Committee said that they wanted to make sure they did it this year. They did it in Powell for their town, their town meeting. And they have done it in other places. We have, you know, it, it would be lovely if this room was filled with organizations that wanted to share information. And over the years, we have had a couple tables. So it's absolutely allowed.
Well, I think for people.
Whether you like it or not, it's absolutely allowed.
If somebody wants, a group wants to put out pamphlets, that's great. I don't think we need an organization staffing a table.
They're part of the town. They are the town.
Nancy, I'm the liaison to this group. I was asked by this board to be the liaison. I am in support of that committee's work. It's valuable information, public information that's being shared with our residents by a committee that was formed by this board. I have nothing else to say about it. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
So moved.[1787.41]